I like to see my arm every once in a while when I'm talking in French.
Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Our last call is meeting to order. Let everyone join me in the blessed relief to sit here. The Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, it broke off, Mr. President.
Your report?
Here.
Mr. Carter?
Here.
Mr. Corrigan?
Here.
Mr. Ballack?
Yeah.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe all the board members have a copy of our last board meeting minutes. Would there be any additions or corrections? And if not so, could I get a motion to approve these minutes?
A motion.
Second. Motion to approve minutes. Trustee Connor, second. Trustee Corrigan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you. Well, at this time, I would like to open up the meeting to the general public.
Well, we already started the discussion. Main thing versus the county budget. As you know, tomorrow night, we're facing making a decision about asking the Senate and the Assembly to put legislature to approve the home rule, asking for 8 percent. I really don't know how the vote would go. I think there are enough votes to want it because you saw some of the quotes in the paper today. That's where we're at. Costs that we have no control over, Medicaid being the biggest one, some social services things, for instance, they just bring so much we pay for shelter costs. You know, these come out of taxpayers' pockets. Retirement, you probably got hit with that too this year. Health insurance costs a lot. And then you've got all the other stuff. So we've been keeping down, even if we hire no new personnel and even release some, which we hope to, I think some of us are saying, if we go for an increase, we're also going to show taxpayers that we're going to cut something. What, I don't know. But there'll be some debate about that, I'm sure. But I'm trying to get my four governors to give me their input, you know? I've contacted the two town supervisors and still haven't talked to Mayor Nuss's point, but I heard some of your comments this evening. Any guidance you can give me? I'm very torn. As you know, I'm a conservative. I vote no on any kind of increase. I'm all for cutting. I'm a big cutting person, but I'm also realistic. You can't, you have to cut a heck of a lot of personnel to make up for five million dollars.
What will 1 percent do in that situation? Have anybody written the numbers?
Oh, yeah.
Do they know 1 percent is going to do it?
Well, three-quarters percent.
Yes, or three-quarters of a percent, right.
Yeah, quite a bit. Five million dollars, and this has made it.
And the budget is running, would you say 3 or 4?
Well, preliminary budget was 32 percent over last year. But that's what I call the wish list budget. That's before we look at it and say, we don't get that, they don't get that new desk, they don't get that new computer, you know?
Right.
That's the Christmas list.
Now, of the three-quarters percent, is there any that's returned back to the?
No, I asked that question last week. I think it all counted.
All counted. And ask?
Yeah, I did too. I wasn't sure what was being looked at.
What is Vermont at now? Didn't they just?
Five?
Was it five?
I think five. We had looked at bed tax in this county because other counties seem to do well, but it would only be about $200,000, the estimates are good.
And you need or you're looking for, how much is it for the budget that's not needed?
Oh, we're several million, you know?
Really?
Yeah. I don't know what the paper said today because you can play with numbers.
So three-quarters of a percent will give you about $500,000?
Oh, no. No, five million.
Five million.
There's something seven millions.
Yeah. I haven't seen final numbers in deference, you know, so.
You have to keep up with the times.
The airport terminal, that should be, we have to contribute some, any expense, new airport, but supposedly we're getting some federal money. We have received already, it's four and a half million. The new jail, bonding, but that's like a credit card, you end up having to pay.
Is that a new jail or an addition to the existing?
It's an addition and repairing the current jail. The current jail, it never was built very well. It was not. It's poor. So the roof is going, there are things that, you know, I can't even share a TV there.
Right.
Regarding this jail, but yeah, things are just not good at that jail. So they'll be fixing the old ones. We need additional space and if we get money from federal prisoners, that's also planned for regular employment, as guaranteed as 90 percent beds, you know? They'll pay us for 90 percent whatever they have in the building.
Really?
90 percent of their 45 that they want.
Okay. You can't beat that.
So.
I don't know, three-quarters of a percent, if you don't keep up with the times, I don't know how else you can do it. I mean, nobody likes it, nobody wants it, but how else can you do it?
At least half the counties have it now.
And similar to what Albert was saying, you know, anybody goes out and they really wants something, it's three-quarters of a percent or 1 percent, I see, you know, that much, yeah, it adds up, I mean, it's a necessity.
Then we hope to not charge for any heating fuel. You probably saw that in the paper too.
We're going to have free heating fuel. Explain that one to me.
No, no, no sales tax.
Okay.
No sales tax.
Oh, okay. Get rid of the 3 percent, the NYGR tax?
The New York State one would probably stay, but the county one, is there?
Of heating oil, I think there's only one, it's a gross receipts tax, NYGR tax. If you want to understand, that tax goes to pay for a bridge in New York City, but I'm not sure.
I know, but.
There's no tax on a heating fuel.
It's county tax.
It's 3 percent. Now, maybe one of that 3 percent, maybe one of the 3 percent of that.
I'll find out for sure, but.
Is that just fuel oil or is it for?
Not gas.
Natural gas, propane, any heating.
Any heating.
That's right. There's no road use in jail.
Right.
It's normally a 3 percent, which is an NYGR, and the last time I researched, it was some type of a gross receipts tax to pay for a bridge in New York City, but I just, okay.
And business is also an extra tax for heating fuel.
That's right, yeah. Now, a business would pay the full 7 or 7 and 1/4 percent, 8 percent, whatever we're looking at, yeah. That would always mean the same, probably, for a business.
Probably, I don't know. I don't know all the specifics, only that just things being proposed.
It's just a proposal right now.
Yeah. What we have to vote on tomorrow night is whether we go to the legislature and ask for them to propose this and then send a little assembly of law after the vote to get it through. A lot of counties are asking for additional, so we're not going to.
And it's too bad, you know, as time goes on, things wear out, you have to repair business, you have to, you have to put more money into it to have it repaired. It would be nice if I didn't only ever have to buy one car and never buy another for the rest of my life, but that's not life. I think most people will, you know, expect an increase. Whether they want an increase is another issue. We, like Randy is saying, we have to keep up with the times.
Seems to be easier than, you know, having to lose tax of 20 percent. I just couldn't do that.
Yeah.
Pulls up county government, I think I just don't know.
Well, good.
Well, if there's any consolation, my opinion is, you know, you have to stay with the time. Nobody wants a tax increase, but if you're backed against the wall, that sounds like the most sensible approach, in my own opinion, you know.
Well, if I find out additional information, I'm going to have to get back to Albert and Char and see what he thinks, but that is pretty much.
Thank you.
Ain't no fun.
Never is. It's the same thing with our budget process. When we go through, we have a Christmas list, we have a need list, we have a want list, and what we end up doing is getting the bare necessity list.
The must-do.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you don't.
The ax out. Trying to squeak these little stuff.
So, I, I've been through a process a few times at a smaller scale, but it is no fun.
Has anybody told me, has budgets always been that way? State, county, whatever, has there ever been a municipality or a government agency that says, here's our budget, everybody's happy, and everybody who supports that budget is happy? Or has it always been that way? You sit down, you look at your budget, start chopping?
It always grows.
But I mean, is there ever a budget that, yeah, this is good, sign off, you're done? Or is there always a chopping process in this?
Well.
You know what I mean?
There's always a chopping process.
There's always a chopping process.
Has it always been that way?
Because everybody, you know, all departments and.
The roaring twenties or the fifties, I mean, because you can sit by, hey, let's.
Because you know, people ask for more than what they really expect to get.
There are two types, there are two types of chopping you're talking about. You're chopping from the wish list.
Right.
Versus chopping what exists.
Right.
Like cutting employees or, you know, that's off.
Well, I mean, has there ever been something in existence where there was no chopping necessary, or has this always been there?
Chopping the wish list, oh, yeah.
Of any list?
You do that in school budgets, you do that.
Right.
People always want that, and they'll put it on their list just to see.
Just to see if they get it.
Well, it's like, your budget, you're an independent contractor yourself now, you have a, you have a certain rate of pay that you pay your employers. Now, if they come up to you and they say, okay, I want $4 an hour or more, you're going to say, okay, just, I'll give it to you?
No. That was the answer.
See, but this is where we are, and, you know, you can always, because there are certain things that come in and, and a lot of things that are asked for, you can't actually say that they're probably not needed, but you could probably do it a different way, and there are some things that are just out of the realm of what you can actually afford. And that's the chopping, you know, not chopping your essential services, but it's like she said, a Christmas list, you know, that's more or less where we are. And when we say chop out of budget, that's, that's what we do.
We always get that in accounting. You always have a department head that wants an assistant, wants a deputy for their department, you know? They'll try.
Oh, yeah.
And they get very clever, very creative, you know? Well, I have it in my budget this year because I saved on such and such, yeah, but what happens next year? Because once you have it, you know?
And you save so much. In this year's budget, I guess you don't need that extra money next year.
Yeah.
So, but they're cute about that too, you know? Once they get it in, it's hard to get it out.
That's right. You will, you will get some experience at that this year. This is going to be.
That happens after January.
You're wishing, you're wishing.
I mean, along the.
In 25, if anything, economy.
The economy is just very tough.
Yes, it is.
Just short of the depression period. And all it is, the economy is very rough.
So that was my only item. Other thing is my bank, we are working on that. Don't let it discourage you that looks like Afghanistan.
Actually, I, there's little things that you say that are very positive.
Where's the, where's the?
Does water affect you a lot, the rain?
It flows through down there.
That's what I was asking, somebody had mentioned, I came up with, oh, but it doesn't matter, where the air conditioning is, that there's a concern that maybe the water might get to it because it runs down through there.
Yeah, there tends to be a little washout there and that, so we're going to do something like that. Oh, again.
It's nice to see, it's nice to see something happening with that.
Windows get fixed.
Because I can remember when I was just a toddler going in there.
That was a bank then?
It was a bank.
Yeah.
I went there, but it was a library upstairs.
Well, I won't go any further than that, but I can remember the bank part, you know?
And I worked in the bank downstairs. I'm a graduate in high school. It was a library upstairs when there was a bank downstairs, was that chapter 10?
I guess that was the door to the right. I believe that was the door to go upstairs.
To go upstairs to the library. And I would come and call them, it's a library. So I figured, right, right.
Sure.
Oh, that's it.
That's it. Well, thank you very much for coming this evening.
Excuse me.
You have a wonderful evening now.
Get ready for tomorrow night.
Good luck.
Yeah. Have a good meeting.
Aye. Ladies and gentlemen. There's nobody else in the general public. The mayor's report. I had Bob do some research, like I was saying, you know, we're going to have another budget year coming up, just like we do every year in the past. And I had him go through and run up a bunch of figures, and I wanted them, for all the board members to have, in a comparison to what the cost of running our wastewater treatment plant, in comparison to what it costs to run other wastewater treatment plants, at a comparable usage. And from what I'm gathering, the more usage, the more that you use it, the less it costs to run it. The less users, the more it costs to run it.
Per user.
Per user.
Per user.
Per user. So what I had him do was go through and, because as you've noticed, we just finished our last year's budget and we started this year's budget, and as last year, like the year before, our wastewater treatment budget was a disaster. This is premature, but I think we need to keep these figures and I think we need to think ahead for next year.
Was our budget last year at a line? I'm not familiar.
Well, we were around, I believe, $40,000 short on our wastewater treatment budget.
Now, what happens with your actual figures being close?
Right. Well, what actually happens with that, all, all work related, everything that.
Suddenly done with a $40,000 shy?
Around there, I believe. Was it in there somewhere? No?
No, that's like.
We're over by $500.
Yeah.
For the year.
Overdrawn.
But you're correct in the respect that we used some of our fund balance previous year.
Right. So, my thing is.
So what you're saying is we had to put money into this in order to be $500 short at the end of the year?
Well, we did, we took some out of our fund balance.
To put into the sewer.
Right now, the year end, we're running up a new one.
Even though we had it going to?
We didn't.
Oh, we didn't?
Right.
I think, turns us talking about last year?
Yeah.
Last year?
No. Our bill of duty, yes.
It came at the end of the year, we were $500 short, but through the process of that year, we took some money from the fund balance and put into that account?
Well, fund balance is going to stop if you're in, in the end of the year, but it's just, it's just sitting there. You can take from there throughout the year.
Right.
But at the end of the year, one year is living.
Did we take money from it? Because it did match the budget, I guess? Isn't that the issue here, is the budget of the sewer going?
Yeah. I think what, what triggered this all is, it seems like, ever since that I've been on the board, every year, we seem to be out of balance with the wastewater treatment operation.
Whatever we figure for doesn't make it.
Our water is good, so what I said was, let's try and get what other municipalities comparative to our size budgets for their wastewater treatment. And by the looks of this, we're on the low end. Okay? So being on the low end might mean an increase in wastewater treatment.
Would being on the low end indicate we're running a tight ship? In other words, if we've managed to.
Absolutely.
If we've managed to do it with that low of a number, wouldn't that mean that we didn't really waste a lot in?
Oh, no, it isn't what we wasted because we are.
We are a tight ship.
We are actually running a Class A.
In some places, we prefer doing something until next year to get it done.
So what I did was I just had him run some numbers up for us to be able to go back to and say, okay, when we come to do our budget again, we're going to find out exactly, because we have a tentative budget of how much it's going to cost, and when we get into it, we're going to find out where we are, if we are at our expected revenue, or if we're below our expected revenue. And if we're below our expected revenue, we may have to have a sewer increase. So these figures were just put out for the general board for us to look at. You know, I'm not saying that's going to happen.
Right, right, right.
But what I wanted to do was get a comparison for, for other units that are running like we are. So that is what this package actually is all about. Okay?
It's kind of, I looked at that, and it's kind of tough to compare one to another. You know, yeah, okay, you're comparing gallons.
Well, I did more than that. That's what I put down.
What I'm looking at is, maybe some of these communities don't have as much as us that are bigger because they have a little less iron eye. And I know we've brought that down a lot over the years, but some places still probably are more efficient than what we are. Because a lot of these places that you're looking at are far bigger than what we are.
Oh, God, yes. The population is much larger. If you try to match a population to size plants, to complexities, I don't know that I can match a plant.
I'm just trying to add another perspective to it.
Yeah.
Is, you got more people in the community, you got more money coming in that you can support at a higher level. You know, that's kind of what I'm saying. Just want to keep that in mind.
No, no.
I think, see, I was looking at this, or understanding this from a different approach too, but when Albert gets on top and I'm looking at it like, yeah, we're running a tight ship, this is a great thing, but the idea of us running that tight ship and cutting back on so many areas may involve a sewer increase because of, like Celine just said, cost of living. If you don't stay up with the times, sooner or later, someone's going to wear out. We need to replace a pump, we need to, so this would indicate.
We are running.
Us as a board and to the people who are paying the sewer rates, we're running a tight ship.
Oh.
We're running a very feasible or inexpensive operation, doing as much or very comparable to the others.
And we have an impressive facility, okay, so.
Yes.
And that's what makes us run a tight, I mean.
Right.
But we are, you know, I'm just, I had to figure, brought out, just for informational purposes, that's more or less what it is.
So it's not so much that we're going to do more there, it's so much as to keeping up with the economy.
Right.
If we can keep up with the economy based on this comparison, we can say other plants of about our size or about our whatever are doing the same thing we are, and there's their numbers, and we're running way low.
Right.
Which is good. We've managed to do this for the people for quite a while, this is a good thing, but we can only do it so long because.
That we may have to increase.
To accommodate the new pump, the upgrade of something, gear, whatever. I was looking at this all with a different interpretation at first, but that makes more sense.
Yes, it does. And that's, and that's the only reason that I had Mr. Solomon do it.
No, no, I look at it all different angles.
Well, that's good.
Originally, when I looked at this, I was looking from a different way, and now I see it from another way, and it kind of makes better sense.
Right. And that, and that was the only reason that I had done, and that was the only purpose, you know? Because I wanted to see where we were running per thousand compared to the rest of them.
I also tried to give you how many people were working there, when it was built. There's many comparisons. When you go down the list, then, then you go to different treatment, the way wastewater is treated, then that becomes another whole issue.
Right.
In how you deal with it.
Right.
We're required, because we live next to the lake, we have a very stringent phosphorus line. I mean, you keep hearing Champlain 2000 about this phosphorus thing.
Right.
We're on top of this.
Yes, we are.
We really are on top of this. So, I don't know, I think it shows that we're in a very good light in a lot of ways.
Yeah.
And, and other ways, perhaps we can do something different or something to improve, I don't know.
Right. But I was, my main concern was to find out comparatively where we were running compared to a lot of the elements. And that's, and that's what it did. And that's what this paper was for, was for your information only. I mean, you know, this is, just to let you know.
Get an idea of what's going on. And I've had to see this because I've talked with the guys down at the wastewater plant, and Steve mostly, and then Woody also, you know, they show me charts and graphs and then, not that I need to know it all, but it's good to have an idea of what's going on, and it looked like they were doing a good job, and I guess this just kind of backs it up.
Yes, it does.
You know, it's, we're right in the ballpark and doing well.
We are, we're state of the art, yeah.
So, we are doing a good job down there, from what I can tell.
Okay. As, as you know, we talked, Bob has talked earlier, and we are going to be sending Mr. Woodrow Kissel to our wastewater courses. Because we need to get him certified, and apparently, he seems to be the only one, and apparently, from what I gather, he does a good job, so he's enlisted in school, and I wish him the best of luck, you know? We need the, we need the operator. We have a purchase rec in front of us this evening for 20 water meter heads, a tune of A lake emulsion and a second purchase seize.
I've got a, is there a discussion?
Yeah.
Bob, didn't we just recently?
We used.
I knew you had said something about, yeah, we should be set with getting back contractors of material, but it wasn't enough?
No, no, no. And.
I knew it was something to do with.
This, this is another supplier. I always had one supplier that really came through for me, didn't take me too long. Tried another outfit. It took them three months to come up with these meetings, and then I tried this out. This, this is out of Massachusetts, and they probably aren't really supposed to be selling to us. Sloan-Bergy knew this. They have districts. I mean, this is a monopoly of a sorts.
The water meters?
Water meters. Water meters are, other than competitive, other competitors, within their own framework of their own companies, it's sort of like these little distributorships or whatever, stocking distributors, actually have it the world. There's nothing you can do much with.
The numbers by the piece are about the same, about where you go?
He did have a better supplier, it did better job of pricing. High class.
Do you need a motion on that?
Yeah. Motion by Trustee Corrigan, second Trustee Connor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, and like I was saying earlier, it's too bad. I would like to, still own the first car I ever bought, but they do break down, same thing here, they're mechanical, they break. As, I think in your correspondence, we had a, a cost to have Sam Hyman survey our land, and from what I concede, the cost is very reasonable. I would like the board's approval to, to have this done so we actually know what is what.
I just have one question on that.
Yeah.
Is additional charge a cost for special prints?
Yeah.
Do we need the special prints? What that special cost is? I mean.
Well, he won't, he, if you have to make a Mylar print for some reason, that's why he put that in. If you require him to make a Mylar print-
What's a Mylar?
It's, uh, copyable through these blue cover sheets. We can, one most everything, we, we need a little copy. So, I mean, that's not a big issue. But he, he put that in in case that became a requirement.
Right. And is there any time specifications?
No, he's, but he's been doing a lot of surveying lately, so. He asked me about, he says, is this, is this something that I'm gonna do, he says, or is it, uh, is it by the boards? I said, well, we haven't had a meeting.
I just want to prove it and, you know?
And hang on.
Take months and months and months. If it's gonna be done, to get it done and over with, then move on, kind of thing, as compared to-
Depends-
I think that if we, if we did approve it, we should, with the thing, I mean, obviously the guy took the time making the quote, that if it's under the quote, we'd gladly accept that type of a bill, and if there's any reason to exceed it, you know, has to come back to the board.
Right.
Well, he's looking at time limits.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not-
Time limits.
How long is it gonna take?
No, I mean, your first question was, what's the extra cost?
Well, no, that was the, that was for the additional cost for special prints.
Right.
Which is different from the, the right price. I just wanted to-
About eighty percent of surveying is research.
Right.
Twenty percent is going out for the marketing.
For the marketing, right. But I think the issue was brought up earlier from, uh, trustee Corrier on the right of wage and what have you, and I, and I think it's in our best interest.
Yeah.
And at that cost, uh, it's very reasonable.
I'm not disagreeing with the doing, I just wanna make sure that's be done in a timely fashion, and if there's any additional costs stated below, then we'll have to address that.
Well, you would have to, you would have to ask him to do something special.
Yeah.
And at that time, that would be the one thing that would trigger. So if you don't ask him to do anything special with a print-
It's right, that's where we are.
If, one more question, if, at the time he does survey it and drop the pin in, would it be to the village's best interest to put the actual concrete marker and you can pick them up at?
Yeah.
Where do they get them now?
There's torches.
Well, it's an actual-
There's a monument, a monument, a concrete monument right in the day.
We've got men here that can pop a hole, and he can set it wherever he wants it. And this would permanently leave a marking area for future problems of not having to-
Something that you can pick up with a magnet with a-
Really, twenty bucks or ten bucks?
They're not torches.
A cement deal with a brass pin in it.
Right.
You know? And shovel pop it in.
Right. I think, I think we would do that after it's marked. I think, my, my, my thing is-
Is it time to do that when the surveyor is here?
Oh, yeah.
That way, there's no question somebody moved it or whatever.
Right.
He's here, it goes in, it's done. Like, you think, I think that's-
The other thing that I would do in the same vein would be to triangulate a, a mark from. In other words, when you do it, take two points off the side of this building.
Oh, and document it in a book, yeah.
Document it in a book. Well, put it right on the same map.
Right. That's where we know. Or something has happened, we can all, I can report.
If you walk in asphalt, you asphalt over it.
Right.
Yeah.
You can pick that right up again.
So, my, my thing is, I'm asking that we hire Sam to survey the land at the cost which he has stated. Do I need a motion to that effect? Motion by trustee Short, second trustee Connor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Uh, I think, maybe we should talk about this. After, uh, I would like to call for an executive session this evening for a personnel issue. And that's it for me. Report trustee, trustee Connor?
Uh, I've had some discussion with, with some village residents concerning an issue that we received a letter on that I would also like to discuss that in executive session as a personnel issue, so.
Okay.
I think that's where it'd be appropriate to discuss.
Right. Okay.
And, uh, I think that's all I have for now.
Okay, then, trust, thank you trustee Connor. Trustee Short.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you, trustee.
You ready? It's our short one, trustee. Had a, a resident come up this morning in regards to the severe rainfall that just occurred, but apparently has been an ongoing problem with water. Tony Philion, Finley Drive, water that washed down over his embankment. He does keep it fairly neat and clean around there, I guess Gene, his son-in-law, does a lot of the maintenance there. Uh, met with Gene this morning, went down, took a look at it, uh, had a few ideas of my own, not really sure what's, what has evolved there through the years, or what we've done there, but I know we did make some changes, so we turned back to my shop, and the property owner showed up, Tony. Um, pretty much same scenario again, concerned in, uh, what's going on or what could take place. Uh, talked with Bob, matter of fact, Bob came down, met with me, we went over there and looked at it, uh, came up with a couple of ideas. Um, the property owner is, is indicated to me that the main issue is to get it, the water back to the other side of their driveway, their, their ramp to the downhill area. I guess, uh, Gene, the son-in-law, has picked up some stone and stuff on several occasions because of washouts. Um, my thoughts to this, after taking a, a trip out there and talking over it with Bob, the little four-inch culvert that we installed, is that correct? The village installed it?
There was, there was one there, and we reinstalled the same size.
The same size. Um, being of a four-inch at the end of a twelve-inch, you have a twelve-inch that's feeding a four-inch, kind of out of balance there.
Right.
I think if we put a twelve-inch culvert in there, and took the road and brought it the other way to keep the water, to bring it back to where it used to be, the changes that I, I guess the village made there at one time, said, well, let's bring it to this side because of slope of the land, you could crowd it to the opposite side of their driveway to accommodate. Well, what's happening is that that side of the driveway isn't really designed for it, and water crosses and makes roots and crevices and the whole thing.
Washes it right out.
It washes it right out. And I believe you were there today too, Elber.
Yeah, I, I went down and investigated as well.
There's like a foot to sixteen-inch crevices and whatever. Um, my own opinion, and it's open for discussion if anybody has any input, if we took that road, brought it back and culvert, do we have culverts here, Bob, that, I mean, is this a major issue?
Um, maybe.
It's, okay. So, what my suggestion is, by looking at this, to put a few issues to bed and not create any more long-term disruption in, in their road, put some pavement in there to bring it back the other way, just to hold it enough to get around the other side of the driveway, and put a twelve-inch culvert in. It may not be, the four-inch might do it, but I, I see problems with that. I don't believe-
Question.
I don't believe that's the right thing to leave there, uh, and I, and I guess that'd be the right procedure when we did it. If it was four, you put a four back.
Yeah, but if it's go for a twelve or four, that's, that didn't make sense.
It didn't make sense, but that was what was there. It's always done it, it's always this.
It, 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 it over, it just overburdens that four-inch.
And I think, I think some of it-
It makes sense.
Yeah. And I think some of it, Chuck, before that issue was there, the road, they brought it this way, so now it brings it more to that four-inch.
Thrust the water that way.
Before it would carry, so you got a percentage through that four-inch, but the majority went around and down the edge of the road.
Right.
Now, with that road the wrong way, it throws it all, right, that four-inch, plus what's coming out of the twelve-inch.
No, no, no.
You can see the debris from the major-
Oh, yeah.
I mean, hey, if you're gonna get a rain running off like that in ice boat with, with Gene and Tony both, I don't care what you put there, it's not gonna work. Under normal conditions, which he still has the same problem, that's the problem. The rain we had the other day, doesn't matter what you do there, it's not gonna-
It wasn't normal.
That's, that's exactly. It wasn't a normal situation.
It wasn't normal.
So, I'm open for, for discussion, or, or, I, I think, as a village, and them being taxpayers, and the situation that's been ongoing, if we could just bring that road back, throw a twelve-inch culvert in, and at the same time, before we do this, if we could approach Mr. Philion, the property owner, and tell him our proposal, from what I understand, he's kind of mechanically inclined, so if we could show him our proposal, what we're thinking of doing, and if he's in agreeance with it, that he would take, you know, his responsibility of his property, and we'll take care of that to correct it the opposite direction, and, and have a place on it to be signed, so everybody's on the same page, and, and we could probably, you know, like I say, with Tony being aware of what's going on, we could move forward the project a little bit sooner, which would help him out in the event of more rainfall.
Right. Yeah, 'cause Bob has already written, I was saying, and he actually has a diagram. Uh, and I think, uh, I think this will correct a lot of it.
Pardon? Yeah, it's why, I only did it this morning.
I originally, when I first went out there, I'm looking at it before I met with Bob, and I'm looking at it, I said, geez, and I was looking at cut half the road out, excavating, and-
Oh, no.
And when I talked with Bob, he was showing me the other angle, telling me, geez, you know, that, that's just as good.
Yeah.
That's why it's good to have more than one person looking at this.
So what we're actually gonna do is pick it up a little bit, move it from the left side of that driveway to the right side, where it used to be.
Where it was for many years.
That's right.
Yeah. And the washouts that he had were along the, the edge of the road, and that was-
And that was, that was fine.
That's his baby, yeah.
Yeah, we're just gonna put it back the way it was, because we initially, when we did that new source system and everything, we changed some of the pitch of the road.
Right. So if we could have, I, I would think that'd be probably the, the best way, business way to keep everything locked down, is if we get some kind of a letter written saying, geez, Tony, we'll, we'll incur the expenses up here, and, you know, you can take care of it down there, and, and what happens from here on out is back to original, so that would be an act of God.
Uh, but I guess, uh, we have the right of way to go down and check our-
We, yeah, we walk down there every single day. Except, I guess we don't do it on the weekends.
Down the road, or?
No, 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 just over the lift station.
What?
Just the lift station.
The upper level.
Yeah. Or do we just-
Check.
There's no surprises.
Right.
The worst thing you need, the worst thing you can have is a three-thirty in the afternoon, a huge surprise. Oh, you know, what's to do, this broke.
Well, I think-
Let's do it itself.
I think a, a letter should be written up stating we are gonna, uh, replace, uh, put the drive back the way it used to be, when we do our paving, and that's the secret to it.
Right.
When we do our paving, because we've got paving coming in the village, but when we do it, we will work on that and put it back to where it was. Uh, and since he saw you first.
I'll speak with him.
You speak.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I'll speak with him and Gene.
Right.
Because they're kind of working on a team effort there, and-
Right.
And I'll explain to him what we just talked about, and then it's, if he's interested, he'll be getting a letter here shortly, or I can hand deliver it, and say, geez, this is what we'd like to do, just to prove our point that we are doing this, you sign it, give you a copy, everybody's happy.
Right. But it will be when we do our paving.
What's paving on the door?
Oh, we got some patchwork.
Oh.
Yeah. It's not, we're not gonna do roads.
Well, that's why I was worried, because they said we're gonna do our paving. You know, I thought there was, you know, the way it sounded, it was a street that, which I wasn't aware of.
No, no, no. Nobody slid that in, right?
I think rather than get a truck full of asphalt to do this, and then two weeks later get full of asphalt-
Yeah. And have to rent a roller.
Incorporated.
And to rent a roller and everything, so when we start to do our paving, it will be done-
You've got the roller rented, and you can do all your spots.
Right.
I've got another place in the French village where the, the resident is complaining about the, the driveway culvert has got a hump in it and stuff, and I've gotta resolve that. Well, I'm gonna have to take the, the culvert out and reset it, and do a pro, try to do a project. Try it.
So, I mean, there should be a timetable, have you, have you got a timetable in, in place?
I'm probably looking, yeah.
Before fall.
Yeah, it'll either be the last weeks in, in, the last week in August or very early September.
Okay. That would probably have to be in that letter to Mr. Philion as well.
Will be done before ground freezes.
Right.
That way, whatever-
Our anticipation is, uh, the end of August, the beginning of September, you know? And that way-
That's the way that we can, you know, keep to a schedule that's halfway decent.
But we will do it this year is the point.
Yes, right.
Instead of making, that he needs to, he needs some kind of-
Needs to know that.
Right. So we're fair on both sides. Um, the other, uh, thing I have is, uh, I, I know we had some discussion with the town and, and the village and wastewater and the whole thing, that's any, I haven't heard any response to that, I don't know if anyone else has, is that still kind of waiting to hear back from them? Anybody heard anything from them?
I thought we were supposed to receive something within a few days, probably.
You do, should have.
You have your, the water agreement with, uh-
What's the great deal?
In what, second, on special?
July twenty-ninth.
Yeah. Number two correspondence? I think that's, that was our-
That's what you got through.
That's what we got, that's what we decided on from that evening?
Right. I mean, that's just to show, I mean, so wasn't Jim and Art here before this one?
Right.
That's just showing that, you know?
But this-
They agreed to-
This is the agreement, but still, this, this, this has gone to our attorney for review, correct? Disagreed?
I didn't send this.
No.
I thought you said-
Apparently-
No, no, I sent some, I sent a contract, I didn't send that.
Apparently, they were supposed to have sent this to our attorney.
Yeah.
That's what Mr. Super-
It was the con, the other thing, okay.
That's the supervisor wall that said, right.
Right, so you said that that was sent to our attorney.
Right.
Our attorney hasn't got back to us on that.
Right. I was also made aware today that there was another player in the, in the whole thing, and that's public service, which is involved in-
In approvals for districts, you know what you're saying?
Yeah. Because they're the ones that set what rate is charged.
I, I guess, I mean, just because of the, the special meeting we had with them, so we can figure out what's going on, you know, I, I know they did say something about twelve days, they'll have some kind of papers back. Uh, I didn't know if anybody had heard anything there.
No.
Nope. Okay. Um, the, I haven't done anything with the hydro generation thing up there, just holding off till we get finalization, or at least a direction with this other thing. Um, if anything comes about within this month, I'd like to get started on it, just so everybody's up to speed on what I'm doing. Um, the other thing is, we talked about, uh, the dog catcher, did we, did we ever get a letter to them stating that?
I followed him.
With the la, I think the last meeting, we were sending out a payment for him, right?
No.
The end of August.
Right, stating that if we didn't receive that payment, uh, his payment might be in jeopardy.
Right, that's what I was hoping. So his payment is due the end of this month?
Right.
So we should have something to apply the next board meeting, probably?
Yeah.
Uh, the other thing is, we spoke about water meters in the public works department. Do we have, do we have a number on, we had 60 or 70 down?
To get that.
They, they repaired, uh, 39 out of 63 so far.
39 out of, okay, so it was a total of 63?
Yeah, it was 69, but there was, uh, six of them, like, one was GSA, there was six that were, um, kind of things up in the air, but it was actually 63 in the, yes.
And they've repaired 39 so far.
And that's probably what provoked that, you know, purchase recollection.
That's exactly.
Running out of material, we get things up and going.
Well, I didn't want to wait until I ran out.
Right.
So we're, we're actually looking at about 24 more to go, and that's actually starting to get within a reasonable figure.
But I think we talked about between five and 10, three months you hit due to bicycle trees.
Right, or wires.
So we're getting closer.
Yes, we are. They did a massive job since our last meeting.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
They still try not to get behind on some of the things.
Right, well, the other projects that are going on, right?
Yeah.
And that's all I have for this evening.
Well, thank you, Trustee Boyer. Report, Clerk Trecker.
Uh, copy me to view with the current in the court, regarding the general water and sewer. Having questions, let me know. Uh, Bob and I have done some discussion on that sewer transfer that we discussed the last meeting. We've got the figure of $14,248, if I'm not mistaken the ledgers, and, uh, it's marked actuals, let's go.
If you wanna...
Actuals.
That would, these are things that should have gone as part of the...
As part of the general to water sewer.
Oh, yeah, as general because of the, the project.
Right.
And, I mean, if you wanna write something else up that gives it to you, but they're all underlined here. And any that I questioned and went back to, you'll find some that there's an underline, and then you'll find some that have an underline, and...
You didn't waste water, don't you?
No, yeah, but this is...
It seems like it's not special.
I'm not gonna talk about what you have in mind.
Oh.
And what I've got him is underlined, and it has a name to it, all that, be something that's...
Can we just round that off to like 15,000, just compared to 14,288?
Transfer. That would be justified.
General, general.
On my general fund balance?
To the, uh, water and sewer, or to the sewer treatment?
Now, this is what we talked about earlier this evening, there's money that has to be transferred when things match?
No, this is, because of things that were done, and money came in for payment, it went into the general as compared to sewer, it needed to be split out before the funds...
I charge it to the money.
So this is just gonna get that back in balance.
Get that backwards.
All right, okay.
I had charged things, but should have went to general.
Right.
And because the sewer is, sewer, I mean, we can put, you know, I think we can put another 700 or some dollars on top of that, just to have...
An even number.
Yeah, into the sewer.
So you're making a motion?
Making a motion, we, we moved 15,000 from our general fund balance to the sewer fund balance, is that where it's gonna go?
General sewer.
Right, do we get a second to that? Second, motion trustee, honor second trustee short to move 15,000 from general to sewer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
What happens when you go to wash?
Yeah, you get real...
Or you're getting, you're getting all that wind.
Report of Superintendent.
Yes, so you have my written report. It's a little brief, as it normally is.
I don't know what I'm gonna do when you're not here to pick on.
Well, you don't have to. Pick on somebody else.
Yeah. When's that happen, in the spring? Trying to remember.
Geez, you, you haven't forgotten, sir.
We won't go there.
Sunday, Thursday, tank today.
Garage door for the wastewater treatment plant?
Yes.
This is a quote?
It's actually, I did the job, I did the job, yes.
Okay, and can you remind me or Philion what, how that happened, or why it was damaged?
Evidently, a bee or something got in the cab of the tractor while the guy was working the tractor, and he hit it with the, hit it with the boom somehow, or the, he really distracted.
Big one or the dog?
That's a good one.
The big one.
That's a new one.
The first one, it's very, it's a very good one, and I think that it deserves...
An applause?
Well, not really an applause, but...
I mean, the dog eat my homework is always done a routine work.
Right, yeah.
You know, the bee in the cab, that's, that's new.
You got, you, you have to remember that they're always thinking and always coming up with new things, so at least they're not dry and usual, they're unusual, so I, it makes it interesting.
Right.
Irregardless of...
That's not acceptable, I mean that.
No, irregardless of what happens, it needed to be repaired.
If it did, did in fact happen, and I think it, it probably did, because I don't, I don't think that this, this guy went to it on purpose.
Oh, no, I'm not saying...
You know, and I don't think it was, he, he's a better operator than you.
Yeah, it was, it was.
It just happened.
It happened.
And...
But we have to question those things.
Have you, oh, of course you do. Have you ever had one hit you in your car?
Yep.
You know, that's...
A bee.
A bee.
Or you get stung by one?
Yeah. I had a nun when I was in the, the sixth grade, her, her parents were killed, both parents were killed because the father got hit by a bee and drove into a hole. So, that was...
Yeah, that'd make me nervous.
Yeah, yeah. I felt the same way.
So, nothing else for, uh, Superintendent? I do, uh, I was going through his, uh, thing, and I don't know if anybody has been as interested as I have, but I have been down the pocket drive, and, um...
I've been along the wall.
Steel is starting to move on one, and the forms are coming good on another, and that only seems to make me wanna put a smile on my face every time I go by and I see that. So that means his projects are going ahead.
There is a potential for two more issues, potential. When I have a building, that's right, it was one before, now there's another addition.
In addition to the two that are going down?
Yes, in addition to the two that are going down, and this is only a positive. So it makes me smile every time I go down through, and every time I see a piece of steel go up, and I'm saying to myself, it's looking better all the time, looking better all the time.
Right, I think there's one thing that we need to discuss is this letter to, actually to the man of the village board, from, uh, Mr. Cannonman?
Cannonman? Yeah.
Sure.
That was something Bob had mentioned in his report, and I think it's probably the best place to discuss it.
I myself am not interested in the property.
Myself either.
I third it. I, I don't think the village should take any responsibility, we've done more than our share of help to them.
So it's unanimous, we do not want the property at 93 Church Street. I believe that's the address.
The last, the other question I have to ask you is, I am going to inform this gentleman tomorrow of this.
Right.
And I'm sure that Mrs. Dawson, you might make sure that we do that. Uh, I also am going to have to tell him that either corrective measures have got to be made right away, or demolish the building right away, or I will have to condemn the building right away. Now, the reason why I wanna give him a little bit of time on, on it, on, on the condemnation is the fact that if there is asbestos for the property, it's up to the asbestos contractor to get rid of it, or to be assessed for it. If it doesn't have it, it's fine. If it does have, the whole building, and if, oh, if it, even if it doesn't have it, and I condemn it, it will have to all be treated as though it had asbestos. So, looking out for all concern, the best, the better of all worlds is to give him a notice and get his intentions.
Right, but notify him that the village...
I will call him and write him.
Right, the village board does not want the property...
That's correct.
By unanimous.
And, and something has to be done immediately, we've got to move forward. I was sending them a demo permit and all the instructions on what you gotta do.
And I still think we have this, the oldest demolition permit has asbestos, this is something...
That was, that was an FYI, that's something I hand out with the building to, I don't think, it's on the building permits.
Right.
So that there's the same set of ground rules, because everybody comes in and they ask you questions, and there's a wrinkle to this and a wrinkle to that.
Right.
Then we can handle the wrinkles rather than the, you know, problem.
I guess, there's one other thing that we received today, a request from a resident for the drainage ditch to have a pipe put in.
Pipe and dirt added to the level to the road?
So I guess you'll be contacting them, giving them appropriate information?
I will be.
And...
And the cost?
Cost, and when?
When we will get to.
When we avail this, which is, is kinda late for us, but it probably...
He was supposed to have this a couple of meetings, at least one meeting.
I think we tried to do that in spring, make sure that they're all in place, or something.
Nobody thinks of summer and spring.
So is there anything else for Superintendent Toto?
If not, I'd like to move on to correspondence.
I have wanted announcement and registration for a town hall meeting with the state comptroller and the local secretary. I have a copy of the bring-up agreement of town change by an NTSF staff to show a lot of support.
This, this is what I'd like to see for Cable Pezz.
He's supposed, uh, that, they were supposed to send that, that was their agreement, to send that to him. Uh, I was on the phone with him today, I, I failed to ask him about that particular, and I never even considered it.
Well, I think that may be called to Mr....
He, he did just have his eyes operated on, by the way.
Okay.
So...
Can we have a copy of our old agreement that we had?
Right, and, and the purpose...
The first?
Well, the, the, yeah, those contracts, you know, the purpose of that is that you make up your mind which one you want to use. Yeah, that's, uh, that was for the, whatever, there came in. You make up your mind which, which version you want to use, and how you want it, and then we'll do it.
And this is in regards to who?
Eric Day UPS.
And...
No, no, only him.
Oh, this one?
That's right, remember the one that, that individual was here online for me?
Yep. So what, what we need is a new agreement, even though we have an agreement now for one end of the building, and a new agreement for the other?
Right.
I got it, okay.
For one agreement, because it's absolutely involved.
Right, and the other part would be an outside user, okay?
Yeah, I don't know why it was done that way originally, but...
As long as what we do now, we keep it right up to speed?
We keep everything the same.
Keep it right on target?
Yeah.
So you're looking for answer for that, no?
No, you can, it'd be nice if you did, but, yeah, I guess probably now would be a good time, now that I think about it.
What, I mean, I haven't taken the time, ever.
We just got it.
Right.
If it's something, this is what we have used in the past, and it was something that Mr. Cable has...
Has already approved, he has the other one in his possession, but I don't know if it's...
Which one, which one is this?
The Daco one.
The Daco one, this one here?
Is the one you've been using, this one comes from where?
That's from the town.
No, that's one that, that Eric sent me that I had to...
No.
This one, oh, 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 this.
Okay, there's another one, I'm talking about this one here.
That's the, that's the one we got from Eric Day, he sent us an example to follow for the UPS solutions, and that, I copied, that was the, our old one that we used before.
So you took the old one from before and added...
He didn't do anything without it, he put that together for us, Eric Day.
Well, then I hit the...
And, and, yeah, Bob made some changes to fit our situation.
No, so what you're saying is...
It's in, I, I wanted the whole business. Okay, be the first one, see, this is the one, this is the one from Eric Day.
No, he's not...
I thought that was, uh, the same thing as the other one.
I think it's kind of a standard...
See, that's, this is the one that they sent?
I would, I would think. I'm glad it's not a case.
But I would like, I think I would like to stay with, with ours, since it's already in place. Uh, my recommendation is that we stay with ours.
To keep everything uniform.
That's right.
Yep, and we appreciate his time at doing that, but we are, we have one.
We have one, we will use this one. Or you have one?
Bob has one.
Thank you.
Item three is correspondence to New York State DEC regarding availability of funds for water quality improvement projects. Item four is, of course, coal sand planning, the village office conference serving for quality dress. Item five is correspondence to Chief Chris Parkland regarding the proper pipe construction, so I got the superintendent Sullivan.
Very well received.
Item six, correspondence to industrial development agency regarding the main cleaning project. And item seven is the same correspondence regarding the better. Item four is correspondence to Mike Shane Plan, Mike George Regional Planning Board regarding the 2003, 2004 Conference of Economic Development Project. And item nine is contract with Mike Sixty, which has our local supply, which is assigned to George Washington.
Thank you, Ms. Dawson. On to old business. I think we just, uh, our first on our thing was our outside user contract. I think we just voiced our opinion to use our original, uh, contract. Number two is we do speeds on, on Ellen Street.
We're not doing the old business.
Uh, because we discussed it the last business, the last meeting.
We just...
Right, until...
Well, I see this, I seen a letter here from somebody, or the law, code of the law.
Right, we, we, we talking to law.
We need information from the school, right?
Yeah, before we can enact on any of that, we need to make sure, because that is still being used as a playground, as a ball field, as a...
Well, I have one comment to make. What was presented to you last meeting, what, Scott, I think you presented it. If you read that law, you find that it doesn't meet the needs that you really were trying to address. The summertime at that, on that street, that's a 30 mile an hour speed.
Right, and it's, those time limits are only from seven in the morning until...
Six at night.
Six at night, I believe.
So it pans out, it already is 30 miles an hour?
Right.
And if they do close the school, we're set, doesn't matter to us anyways, it's always been, there's no school, so obviously it's 30.
30 miles an hour, right, but I wanna make sure that...
Nothing to change?
Nothing to change, really, I just...
We need to hear something from the school.
We need to hear something from the school first, you, you know, part of the concern.
Somebody had brought to my attention, is anybody gonna touch that playground? Or is that playgrounds stayed shut for the...
Well, we need by touching.
I mean, it, can, does the school have the right to, I mean, wasn't it put there by donation?
Yes, it was.
So is that...
The little playground behind the...
It was, in my opinion, from when I, when that was done, and I helped the few days that they, you know, went up, was that that was going to be there, and it was not going to be removed if, for some reason, the school, that was still...
So that should be subdivided away from the school property, and made a lot unto itself.
Whatever, yes.
That's what it needs to be done.
But I think in the future, that, if whatever happens to that school, that decision may be made at that time.
That's right.
You know, that, we just can't, no.
Let's wait till they come to us, say, okay, this is, okay, then, if that's what you're doing, then this is what we need to do with the playground.
Well, I think they're gonna have some kind of, venture, some kind of a committee or group set up to...
To address that, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah.
I just wanted to mention, somebody asked me about that, I said, I really don't have an answer for you.
Right.
Who does the meeting, sir?
Uh, they do, they, they are required to meet, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we have not.
That's still school, so until something comes back to us, we're, we're just in purgatory, yeah, it's school.
Still a school.
It's still school, there's nothing else.
Taxes paid, or?
No, they don't pay, they don't pay taxes, they're tax exempt. Uh. Number three, uh, that request from, uh, Janelle Matthew, uh, for water in Soroka. I don't believe that we have anything in writing as of yet.
I told her when she called me that, uh, when she passed papers and had something that definitive that she owned the property and was going to ask for building permit, that we would deal with it then.
Right.
Now, say, having said that, and we've had a meeting and nothing's happened yet, and it was supposed to happen last week sometime. Uh, and I'm sure that they're busy. If in fact this does happen and they do have it, do I, and, and provided I can find a way to get across that road without coming, I'm still searching for those avenues. Uh, do I have your approval to hook them into one or two?
Yeah.
I can't show up to refuse it.
I don't think you can. You can. You need, it's form.
Right. I, I would think that in this situation, so they're holding deed, that's good. When there's some kind of investment of theirs there, foundation, slot, whatever they're doing, when the, when they are moving into that area, I know it makes it harder for you for scheduling, but if we just go ahead and do something happen.
Oh, yeah.
You know, their grandmother got sick, so we're going to wait till next year.
No, that's not.
See what I mean?
That's not going to happen until.
If there's an intent of foundation work or a well, or not well drilled, obviously, but.
They're going to put, they are going to put.
Some groundwork. Electric in.
Right.
You know, to make the lot worthy of something. And if they don't ever put a house, well, at least the electric foundation there.
Foundation or something there.
They're going to float it on the slide.
Hold it on the basket door.
Yes.
They can stub up from their slot. I mean, they got to come to the road anyways.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got to go to their property line and they take it from there. But I don't think anything is going to happen until we see something moving.
When we see electric pole and.
Well, that's fine.
Yeah.
I know it makes it tighter schedule for you, but.
Yeah.
But.
If possible, just takes a little longer.
Does it look, I mean, does it, does it appear like they're moving rapidly towards the finish line or your own opinion?
I really don't know. I really don't know. I wouldn't want to say something one way or the other.
But by all means, if you're watching this board meeting, we are more than happy to supply with that. We just don't want to jump the gun.
Right. Number four. Jessica Charlotte request for Culver against the lady.
Talked about that already.
Uh.
We're waiting.
That was, yeah.
Yeah.
That's the, uh, it's not addressed in my work report. Uh, there are, I'm waiting for a price. In fact, O G S got back to me and then they wanted some clarifications of what I was asking for. So I think I'm on the right road to getting.
So I was waiting for the quotes, so you give the individual the quotes.
Give them a proper quote.
Okay then. Thank you, Superintendent Sullivan. Our purchase policy. We will look at that in the future. And number six, our replacement of our superintendent. Everybody get copied with what he supposedly does.
Easy.
Oh, didn't. But do you know? I'm impressed. I'm impressed.
That's what I do.
So I said, I'm impressed. Uh. We, I think we need to. I don't know. We need to set up a meeting so that we could figure out. Or when we should advertise.
Spring sound good, you both, or that?
Yeah, we're in no hurry, believe me.
Spring, spring will work.
I think we ought to give it some really serious thought this month and actually come up with a plan for September's meeting. I really do. That would give us three, four months. Three months.
How long? Has anybody, I mean, you've been here how long now?
Uh, twelve years.
So that process. And I'm not real familiar, I mean, other than hiring my own employees, but what, with a superintendent, the process of finding that, where, where do you, what avenues do you look?
Well, I, I advertise in the trades.
A little farther than Plattsburg.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I, when they hired me, they went to the Boston Globe. I think he went to the Times.
Twenty ninety?
New York Times.
Probably Albany paper, I would think.
Albany.
Syracuse.
But I would also go to the trades, that being, uh, National Rural, New York Rural, uh, Water Works. Uh, there's a couple of other ones. Town and County Magazine that, uh, people in my position get.
What is too soon for this? I mean, I guess if you could put an ad together.
June would have been too soon. July was.
I thought you meant June coming up.
No, no.
Oh, okay.
July is late.
No, but I mean, i- in this type of situation, what, I mean, I'm guessing that maybe the first guy that comes knocking on the door is going to be the hero or the knight shining armor, but we obviously need to look at two or three different people, if they're available, where they're coming from.
We had, we had.
Scheduling.
Yeah.
She had fifty-four, fifty-seven applicants.
I don't remember how many they had. I don't think.
That's what I agree.
I don't.
How many did you have? Applications, not jobs.
But twelve years ago, I mean, the economy changed, and we talked about that earlier. Things change. I, I don't, maybe you'll have a hundred applications, you might have two. We don't know.
Yeah, but we, we, you know, it's, it's a elimination process. You look for what we expect to see in an individual.
I don't.
Eliminate those people, narrow it down, uh, find out maybe some more information, then narrow it down a little bit more and you get maybe three to, three to five on your shortlist and then interview.
That, that, that's fine, but we, what I'm saying is we have to start somewheres to be narrowing down from. I mean, the narrowing down process.
That's what you got to get the advertising.
And when should that take place? Like, like, Paul, see what I mean?
Like, I think last month.
The last month?
Yeah.
Last month.
Last, I have the last month.
Oh, last, okay. I thought you meant like in November.
I was, I was serious. I wasn't getting the seat just this year.
See, that's why I'm saying.
We need, we should probably look at, or make a so move or something here to do something in the papers.
Right. I think that probably.
Meeting, so we have.
We might need to get into an advertising.
Some kind of correspondence, not necessarily in a meeting setup with anybody, but some kind of correspondence with feedback from someone.
Superintendent's job available in the village of Champlain, blah, 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 blah.
You know, obviously if it's a younger or moving situation, they got to relocate, they got to find a place to stay, but who knows, but.
Right.
And I, I, my own opinion, I don't know, being fairly new here, and I hate to pay double duty, but if we could work out some kind of agreement with where I, they really should be a hands-on, not working side by side with Bob, but maybe one day in the truck to do the Ridge Road run and then one day in the truck to do the sewer plant. And, uh, you're talking, I, I bet you two, three weeks could go by very rapidly before you even got a hands-on.
I don't think they got to screw it. You, you have to have some kind of.
No, that's to begin with.
Turnover.
All right.
Turnover from one to the other.
Right.
If we can, I mean.
Thirty days would be ideal.
If we can. I mean, I'm not saying that that's going to happen because we're, we're running late.
Yeah, we are.
And to get in that position, it, uh, may not happen.
Well, I guess we'll have to have Janice and Donna run it then.
Take a run.
They'll split Bob's feet.
Right.
Split Bob's feet.
You had, they both have to determine qualifications.
That's right, yes.
Yeah.
And once we have that, we can. For those who are salary, we can, hey, no problem.
Do you remember last time Chuck, did they list a qualification thing or do you, do you list it as a superintendent for village population, whatever?
I'll bet you that adds in the.
Could you pull that and copy us on that so we have a better idea of what, uh?
And I can go get you some from other areas, other towns, of, I mean, other states. Yes, yes.
Do, do they itemize, give a description of a job description?
They give a, they.
Or would that come into play in an interview?
Oh, no, you know.
Three-page ad, I mean.
No, you, you bring it down to about a paragraph, so.
It's, it's high level and that's when, when you start getting applications with their qualifications, that's where you'll see, well, this is going to suit our needs or this isn't. That's how you start narrowing it down and it's, and it's not just a one-meeting process.
Right.
How many did you have?
I'd say at least three, maybe three to five, you know, total.
If not, they should be at least capable of being certified, you know what I mean? Or willing.
Bob had a lot of experience. I don't know if you didn't have a New York certification.
No, no, I had.
Other certifications.
I think. Well, if you could pull that up and find out, copy everybody with, uh, what per se was, was going on, if we could do that, then we could make up our mind and have some.
State of New York makes it very difficult for a superintendent, a sitting superintendent, to be able to, uh, become certi- certified on the job. You have to operate the plant. You obviously can't do that. You can't operate the plant and run a village. No.
No, right, right. You can't do that, right.
But you have to have at the very minimum an excellent work and knowledge of.
Are you, are you wastewater certified?
I was in Manhattan.
Are you here?
No.
No, you were. So in the event of, of labor changing places at a wastewater plant, could that qualify? If the superintendent was licensed, could that?
He would have to spend the hours.
He has to have contact hours.
There in the plant. He has to be in the plant.
She has to have contact hours. She has to be there.
That's the killer.
That's.
So replacement person isn't so crucial that they have in wastewater. It'd be nice that they're fluent in the operation of it.
Exactly.
Right.
But not necessarily hold a license.
Right. Where in.
Chances are if they did hold a license, they are very fluent with wastewater plant.
Well.
If they do hold the license, so if they do hold a license, it's probably a good thing. They don't, it's not necessary to have.
Right.
To fit our bill.
You know, you'd take, let's say you had either a young or an old engineer. Let's say, let's say you had an older engineer who was maybe like forty or fifty, something like that, really wanted to change what he was doing, wanted to go to government. Uh, he probably wouldn't have a wastewater license. But he'd have a darn good work and knowledge of what, how it works and why it works.
Right.
That's something we can.
See, this is.
I don't think that would be one of the criterias, I don't believe.
I think that I made it clear in there about that when I wrote it. I don't know. It's up to you. I mean, you, you have the final.
Well, what I would like to see is what our ad was last time. See what you can find out. Let's get it ASAP as soon as we can. And if I have to, we can look at them all and I can pull a board and see what, which one we figured would be the best.
But I, I think you need to do something before next, I, I, I think we need to send, send the ads out, put the ads out before our next meeting.
Oh, well, just once in. I want it done as quick as I can.
This week, the next week?
Yeah, and then have something to pull aboard and, and send that one in. Well, this will be advertised before our next meeting.
Okay. Where do we want to be sending this? Where are these girls, where should we have them?
Just follow this to what we did the last time.
Yeah. Right.
The train, night coming.
So they have a place where they can go, but I think what we want to do is set up and see what the job qualifications might be, agree on one and have that set out.
Reason I was asking about the water certification, do you want that in the ad?
I don't think so.
How about this, zoning and building, do you still include that in the same position or?
Uh, it's a different position.
It's a different position now.
No, we don't know if there's anybody locally.
So we're not necessarily combining those anymore?
No.
We, we, maybe you might want to advertise that separately.
I think.
You wouldn't go that far away though.
No.
I think what's, I think what's happening is, I, I, I think, uh, the town is using one. Uh, I don't know if, and I think the village of Las is point, is using the same one. Uh, we may contract and use that one as well. And that would take care of buyers only and, and our enforcement. That would take it out of here. Uh, that way the, the costs would be shared through the three different.
I think we should find out what it's costing because that may.
Be where we want to go. Cause I really don't.
Rookie and.
Bob is unique in his, his thing, because he has all of this, but I think if, for us to find a person that has all of this, it's going to be pretty impossible.
Well, you could ask for it. You can ask if somebody has that basic goal.
We can ask.
You can ask.
But not make it part of the qualifications.
Right.
But not make it part of the qualifications.
Right. It would just be an additional.
Cause I think we have an avenue.
I, I do see that.
Code enforcement officer.
The coordination between zoning, building and stocks and the construction that's going on now.
That's a good point.
In the industrial park. This is really.
Share cost.
It's a very key item.
Okay, so I think that's where we're going to, we're going to go with that. Anything that we can get, uh, ASAP, put it in everybody's box and I expect everybody to review it. And as soon as we get it, we will have some phone conversations and if we have to, I'll call a special meeting. If I can do that. Be lucky, but, uh, I think if we all just talk amongst ourselves, I think we can something hackable. Okay then. Thank you. Is there any new business to come before the board this evening? If not, I would like to have a motion to go into executive session. Motion to executive session, trustee board or secretary, trustee Connor, all in favor?
Aye. Take me a minute to get there.